Afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Fremont County Planning Commission to order. We will do a roll call. I am here. We have two excused, Larry Brown and Gardner Fay. John Carper is here, Rudy Mergulman is here, Travis Payne is here, and Dale McCullough is here. And with that, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And hopefully you've had a chance to take a peek at the agenda. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Move for approval. Thank you. I have a motion for approval.
Second.
We've got a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're good. Also, we have the minutes from the May 6 meeting, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at those. Any comments or changes on those? Looking for a motion on those, too.
Make a motion. We accept the minutes.
It's posted. Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business, and we're going to take the applicants in order on the...
Yes, sir, we are.
So we have ZC 25-001-Qish. Would you care to take it over from here?
All right, so here we have zone change number one. It's Qish 25-001. The purpose of this rezone is to change the zone district from Residential 3 to Residential 2. The current parcel is 41 acres, more or less, with a net tract area of 35.5 acres, accepting the right-of-way for the DRGW Railroad and Fremont County 45. This zone change would allow the owner the ability to apply for a subdivision with lots smaller than the 18-acre minimum for Residential 3 Zone District while still maintaining the rural characteristics of the District 5 Upper Arkansas Valley District. The applicant believes the Arkansas River Corridor will retain its visual qualities and scenic resources if the zone change changes from Residential... Sorry. The scenic resources if the zone changes to the Residential 2 Zone District. Location of the parcel is at 360 Granite Hills Road in Cotepecy. The current Zone District is Residential 3 with a residential use. To the north and east is both Residential 3 with a residential use. To the south is Residential 3 and Residential 2 with a residential use, and the west is Residential 3 with a residential use. Currently only has one access point located off of Granite Hills. The southwest corner is in a floodplain, but that really doesn't affect much for this. For public comments and concerns, no written comments received. We did have a few individuals come in to inquire about the process of a zone change. They had verbal concerns about losing rural characteristics of the area due to a higher density allowed by a smaller lot size, but that's all we've had, just general conversation at the front counter. For agency comments, we requested comments from various review agencies. Staff has incorporated comments in part or entirety into this document. Building Department does not have any records for the property. They state that the assessor is indicating there's possibly two dwellings on the property. However, when code enforcement went out, they could not verify that that existed, and talks with applicant is there's no... There's not multiple homes existing there. With all that being said, the Residential 3 lot touches a Residential 2 lot. They're eligible for a zone change, and staff recommends approval of this zone change, one, from Residential 3 to Residential 2. That's my report.
Thank you for that. Would we like to hear from the applicant?
I'm representing that applicant.
Great.
Okay, I'm helping out Ralph and Joanne.
And you might introduce yourself, too, please.
All right. I'm Alan Dorn. I'm helping out. I volunteered to help out Ralph and Joanne. And Judy Reedy will be the one who'll end up getting the lot once this is completed. It's been quite the process. But with this subdivision application, it'll give Ralph and Joanne a little more flexibility on some funds to travel and whatever else they have in the future. Judy's a native to the area, and it'll allow her to stay in this area, too.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on the application that we've got in front of us or comments? This is a zone change request. We do have a following request to create a minor subdivision. Is that... I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir. Depending on how this one goes, there is an application following it for a minor sub.
Okay. Hearing no comments or seeing nobody rushing to speak? Any... Open for a motion?
Make a motion to approve ZC 25-001-Qish.
I'd second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we move to the second part of the proceedings here for this particular piece of property. And Dan, you want to take that away?
All right, everyone. Here's the second part of it. We have a minor subdivision, 25-002-Qish. Applicants are Alan Dorn for Ralph and Joanne Qish. The requesting... The request is a approval for a minor subdivision that will create a total of two lots. Again, location's 360 Granite Hills Road. Lot number one, private well, on-site septic system, serviced by Senator DeCristo, and they have a wireless provider. Lot two is proposed to have all of those same things. Lot number one has a dwelling in outbuildings. Lot number two is vacant. If approved, lot number one will have a minimum lot size of 26.367 acres, and lot number two will have a minimum lot size of 8.911 acres. It exceeds the development requirements for Residential 2, which is four and a half. So it's almost double what's required. Everything's fine with coverage, building heights, road frontage. The existing lot one has a couple structures that are within the setbacks. They're existing. So later on, I'll get into that a little bit. Lot number one takes access through Granite Hills Road. Lot number two is proposed to access off of Fremont County Road 45. Let's see here. No street improvements being recommended. So waiver requests or deferment. The drainage plan and report at the time of development, and the soil testing for an OWTS. The building department with an 8.9-acre lot, they... There's going to be somewhere on that lot that's suitable for an OWTS, so they think soil testing will be fine to defer. The one comment worth mentioning that we received is from the Western Fremont Fire Protection District. Fire Chief Walker is requesting a two-lane road or driveway is recommended to allow for simultaneous response and evacuation under low light or poor visibility smoke conditions. So we did get that comment, that request from the chief. So with all that being said, the Planning and Zoning Department recommends approval of this two-lot minor subdivision with the following conditions. A, a note will be on the plat stating at the time of development, a drainage plan and report will be completed and approved by our engineer for lot two. A note on the plat that replacement or relocation for any reason of the noncompliant structures will be in compliance. So if something... God forbid there's a fire. When it comes time to rebuild, they're going to have to be rebuilt within the current zoning Approval of the soil test waiver until the time of development. And then we have two red lines. The surveyor... There's notes on the plat that says it's Zone 3 or Residential 3 Zone District to be corrected to R2 Residential 2, and then remove ownership names of the adjoining properties. So mostly just plat language and approval of a waiver.
So where does the road request come in from the fire department? I mean, so that's not getting put on a plat or anything like that? They've requested it?
So the fire department's requested it, and this one was kind of... Staff, I kind of didn't know which way to go on this one. So the applicant... Conversation with the applicant is they're willing to put that in. We've never had someone request the width of a two-lane road for a driveway before. That's kind of a big ask without any turnout. Anything else? There's access from Granite Hills Road that runs the entire east side of the lot? So the applicant stated they're willing to do it. I wasn't sure about if I have the authority to force that to happen. I don't know.
Would that be something that... I could work with John, the fire chief, on that as far as maybe putting like one passing zone in the driveway. Something in the future, I'd definitely make sure it'd meet his approval, you know, for any driveway that's done.
Yeah, and I've seen where there's single-lane driveway with like pullouts every so many hundred feet, so that way opposing traffic can't... Doesn't... People won't get jammed up. But the width of a two-lane road going in there, just... I don't know.
Concerned about the gate and be a single-lane gate or have to be a double-lane gate?
Like I said, I would leave that up to John, working with John, the fire chief.
Yeah, I might be more of a concern in the road, be how big of equipment they cut into the gate.
Well, I'll coordinate with Road and Bridge or the fire department, whoever. I've been dealing with a lot of different railroads and whatever, anyway, so.
Yes, I mean, if we were to add a condition of insulation of the driveway, be agreeable with the fire chief of the West End or the Western Fremont Fire Protection District, we could add that condition if this board's comfortable with that.
The... I don't have a reference in front of me, but there is a new legislation that have been... That's been passed that I think becomes effective this year about wildland fires, and it establishes standards for buildings and new construction. And I'm not sure if that's... If it's in effect yet or not, but it is. It has been passed and signed
Okay.
By the legislature and governor, respectively. But so there are changes out there on the horizon. I'm not sure whether they're here yet or not.
Okay.
But I'm fine in leaving it with the... At the discretion of the fire chief and working it out with the property owner.
Yeah, I don't... I don't have a better phrase for that. I guess I want to be careful with the wording, though. It has to be agreed upon by the fire department because then they can kind of do what they want, right?
Yep.
Be nice if they had something, some kind of specs that we could point to that we know what we're giving them power to do, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And they could kind of set any stipulation that they want.
That was kind of mine unknown. You know, it's pretty standard, like we need covering over a culvert in order to get the weight of the trucks over and stuff like that, but I just haven't seen a two-lane
Sure.
driveway yet.
Yeah, doesn't seem to be a bit much.
Yeah, so... But if the applicant, I guess, is willing to have conversations, maybe we can get that buttoned up before B OCC.
That would be good.
Yeah.
That would be good. The... It says here that the replacement or relocation of any noncompliant structure shall be in compliance with development requirements. Any problems with that from the applicant or the...
No, I mean, whatever we put on, whatever structures we go, of course, it'll go through the building department, so.
Okay, great. Okay. Further comments or questions from?
Just last comment is, I can appreciate other people's concerns about keeping with the rural nature, but I think it's a nice thing that you're not creating as many lots as you can. You know, you're keeping lots double what, you know, what the minimum is. It's not like you're trying to put as much density as you can, so I can appreciate that. Just want to make that comment.
So with that, I'm open to a motion.
And make a motion to approve MS 25-002-Qish with staff recommendations. Good enough?
We have a motion and a second. And just one comment to staff. You will bring up the issue of revised fire land codes with the commissioners?
I absolutely will, and also reach out to Chief Walker
Okay.
And see if I could have some direct conversation with them to find something agreeable.
Thank you. With that, any further questions, comments? Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is MS 24-005-Helmick, requesting approval for a minor subdivision that will create a total of two lots. And we have a staff report.
All right, so here we have Minor Sub 24-005-Helmick. Applicant Nate Helmick being represented by Three Rocks. Request is for approval of a minor subdivision that will create a total of two lots. Lot one has proposed city water, Fremont sanitation, Black Hills Energy, Atmos Energy and Spectrum. Lot number two is serviced by all of those. Lot number one is vacant. Lot number two has a dwelling in outbuildings. Lot number one is being proposed as two acres, and lot number three is 3.035, exceeding the 8,500-square-foot minimum lot size with public water and sewer. The existing lot two is half a foot shy of meeting development requirements in the front. That really doesn't matter. It's all existing. Same thing with the front yard setback, but again, they're within six inches and it's all existing, so that's not really an issue. Lot number one will access off of Reed Lane, and lot number two will access off of South 12th Street. So we have waiver requests. We have a waiver of the topo and soils information, the drainage plan and report, and street improvements on Reed Lane. So we've received some comments. The county engineer has reviewed the subject application and supports the waiver or deferment of the drainage plan as a requirement. Fremont County Department of Transportation, the applicant will be required to submit for a driveway access permit if taking access from any county road, including Reed Lane. They made a note that they had modified the driveway access permit, and on the access permit, it's written in that they want spec material and county specs used in the easement from Reed Lane to the new lot. So where the new lot will be taking access off of Reed Lane. The proposed lot one, they're requesting spec material and county road specs. Building Department, no issues. Canyon City Fire. The Canyon City Fire Department, this project would require the addition of a fire hydrant to meet the criteria outlined in the International Fire Code. In lieu of adding a hydrant, the fire district would accept a residential fire suppression system installed on the proposed lot one. The applicant has requested the residential fire suppression system in lieu of the fire hydrant. City of Canyon City, a water service contract will need to be completed before a water tap application will be signed off on. And then we have the Fremont Sand District. Sanitary sewer service installation to the proposed lot one will require the sanitary sewer line to discharge to the existing sanitary main located in Reed Lane. Sanitary service installation shall be in compliance with the district's rules and regs and be performed by persons certified by the district. Existing sanitary sewer infrastructure is located along a portion of the south and east of the subdivision boundary. An easement to access and maintain the existing public sewer infrastructure shall be dedicated by the existing owner and shall be depicted on the plat to the satisfaction of the FSD, Fremont Sand District. Prior to recording, FSD will require a lock to be added to the existing gate on Reed Lane if it's going to remain. And FSD would like the opportunity to coordinate with the design permitting and construction within the Reed Lane right-of-way to ensure that any improvements appropriately accommodate FSD. So with that being said, the Planning and Zoning Department recommends approval with the following. Approval of waiver request number one, the topo and soils. We feel the contingency items would be provide a water service contract and allow FSD to place a lock on the gate. For conditions, install a fire hydrant and remove the fire suppression statement. Allow FSD to coordinate with FC dot recommended improvements to Reed Lane. And then waiver request number two, a note on the plat stating at the time of development, a drainage plan and report will be completed and approved by the Fremont County engineer. And staff does not support the waiver request number three for waiving improvements to Reed Lane. So I know I've had discussions with the applicant. The... I believe that the fire hydrant would better serve the community and allow the concerns of water for any sort of issues that could occur, any fires that may happen. It would better serve that area of Reed Lane and better serve the home and be taken care of at the time of development, essentially, or division. Division's the better word for it. So at this time, staff feels that a hydrant would be the better way to go rather than pass the suppression system off down the line to the... Whoever's going to be building. So that's... I'm open to questions.
Any questions?
Yes. The fire suppression system?
Yes, sir.
Would it be privately owned?
It would be.
Okay, and the hydrant is publicly owned?
The hydrant would be, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm a little bit confused about why you would be against having a fire suppression system that is not passive. It's very active in protecting the residents. That's what it's designed to do. The fire hydrant is very passive. You have to wait until the fire department gets there to use it.
So in the Fire Protection Forum, it's... Canyon City Fire Department has a three-minute response time to this address. The fire department... Or the fire hydrant would allow not only this parcel, but the neighborhood access to resupply their trucks in order to fight any fires that occur. And for the individual requesting division, they're handling costs of the division rather than pushing a suppression system off down the line to other folks.
Well, you are aware that Uniform Fire Code would suggest the fire suppression system, right?
Yes. Yeah, and the fire department stated that they would find that adequate. From a planning perspective, the fire hydrant has the... It's a better advantage to not only one residence, but the entire community in that area, so...
Actually, the Uniform Fire Code would show that as being a preference.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's not...
Well, I... To my way of thinking, you should leave that up to the individual that's going to be doing the development.
Okay, well, there was two different options by the fire department. I think one adds more value to more than just one home and would offer a greater benefit versus one form of suppression that would handle one lot and then potentially get passed off to whoever the end consumer is, making their project more expensive. When we went to deferring drainage plans to the time of development, it's great in theory because the drainage plan could be more accurate because it's based off of the structures being provided. It's delaying builds on average probably two to three months and putting the drainage cost onto the end user who did not know that was a requirement. So we're... We did a great thing to allow people the ability to defer, and it is more accurate, but it is also causing greater delays and additional costs to the end consumer. So part of planning is trying to make sure that everything works for everyone and just doesn't have a benefit for one individual. So my recommendation would be the hydrant, but this board and the county commissioners have not agreed with me, and it's fine. So just a recommendation.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, the fire department does take those kinds of planning thoughts into consideration when they're saying whether a fire hydrant needs to go in or individual suppression systems need to go in. There was another lot around Riverside inside city limits where they required the fire hydrant because there was such a large gap in between existing fire hydrants. They weren't allowing the onsite because of the benefit to the neighborhood. So I think that the fire department does that, and I think that those kinds of decisions are best left at the fire department. That's what they do.
Okay.
And if they're allowing both things, then I think it's kind of up to the developer.
Okay.
Because I can understand the line of thinking that you don't want to put that kind of cost onto end users, but on the other hand, you're putting an additional cost on the developers to get the project off the ground with a fire hydrant, right? So it's kind of one or the other. And I think that allowing some kind of flexibility to get projects off the ground isn't necessarily a bad thing either.
Yeah, okay.
That would be... That would just be my only comment. I would be in support of just allowing the developer to make the decision.
Does the developer have to pay for the fire hydrant?
Yeah, the developer would be required for the cost of the hydrant and the install.
Delay the line and tap in, but then that becomes the property of the city, the fire hydrant?
Yes, yeah, then it would be property of the city.
Yeah, so it's got to be built to city specs.
Right.
And once we approve it, the water department, then we would take it over responsibility of it as long as it's in right-of-way.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to say something?
I'm Brandon Hayes of Three Rocks Engineering, representing our client, Nathan Helmick. And if... To comment on the fire suppression system, the immediate end user would be our client. He's planning on developing on the new lot one. And so although it's appreciated that the consideration for the end user to take the cost of the suppression system, that has also been the decision of the end user, being our client, to pursue the suppression system over the hydrant. And there is an existing hydrant at the end of Reed Lane, which is within that 600-foot requirement from driveways, so that existing hydrant already services all the existing residences that would otherwise be affected by that newly added hydrant if it were to be installed. So having said that, we do still feel that the fire suppression system would be sufficient in this case, and we do have an agreement with the CCA FPD for the fire suppression system in lieu of the hydrant.
And I see here that you're requesting the waiver request number three is to waive the requirements for improvements to Reed Lane. Is that correct?
Initially, we did, but the improvements from Jerry Bucy, I believe, from the Fremont County Department of Transportation had laid out that we would need to use Class 6 road base, which would basically just extend that portion where the chip seal, I believe, is what the initial... What the existing road base is right now. Basically just using that Class 6 road base to extend from the lot line to Reed Lane. After that, it's the... On the owner's property to build the driveway.
So you're saying you guys are okay with that?
Yes.
The... Yes, so please. What's the cost to the end user on servicing the suppression... Fire suppression system?
I don't have exact numbers on the cost of the fire suppression system, but we were in touch with a company that does install fire suppression systems. We don't have any plans for actual development for an actual residential structure at the moment, but just kind of ballpark in a 2,000-square-foot building, it was in the range of 5,000 to 6,000.
And you... But you don't know what the annual maintenance cost would be?
Can I step in real quick? So I've done some significant research on this, and I have a plumbing background, and that's kind of why I went with it. I actually worked with a gentleman who's put it in his house. And really, there's no... Really, there's maintenance on it, just like you don't necessarily maintain a fire hydrant in a commercial building unless it goes off. It's actually part of the domestic water system, so... It's actually part of the domestic water system, so there's no stagnant water. Like on a commercial system, it actually ties in in the domestic, and as you bring water over to like a lavatory, for example, it would loop up the wall to a wall pendant and then back down. So there's water only circulating through it, and then, you know, if there was a fire at that time, the head would relieve itself. But as far as maintaining, there's really no significant or maintenance things to speak of essentially.
And then, I'm not concerned about your building a house there. I'm concerned about who you sell it to and what they understand that they are responsible, not the city or the county with regard to anything related to that. That would be my concern.
Yeah, and I mean, I can't speak to that exactly.
Because they'll come back to us and say, well, wait a minute.
Sure, sure. I understand, yeah.
Why did you allow this to happen? Everybody else is covered. Why aren't we?
Yeah, and it is kind of a new thing, and I mean, I don't think there's any significant cost long-term down the road. I mean, it's part of the domestic water system, so there's not like an additional backflow that's required from what I've been reading. I mean, maybe the city could count or speak on that, but yeah, there's really no...
And it's in a basement, or is it a crawl space, or is it throughout the structure?
Throughout the structure, basically it tees off the water line. Say you have a water line going to a sink, and it would tee off and feed this pendant on the wall and then make a loop and tie back into that water line. So there's no, it's constantly flowing, so there's no stagnation of water.
So if I walked in, I'd see the nozzles?
You'd see the wall pendant, like flush with the wall. The piping would be kind of concealed.
Yeah, I understand that part.
Plumbing would be, but, and actually, the insurance agent told me that it's like a 28% drop decrease on your homeowner's insurance.
Perfect.
Right, yeah, so...
Well, I would just hope that anybody you sell it to clearly understands. You know, it's got to be an emptor, but, you know, that the buyer understands what he's getting, what he's not getting.
Yeah.
He's not, he's not...fire department recommended a hydrant, and in lieu of that, there's a suppression system, so...
Well, and I would say the fire department said they could have either one. So if anybody was to go back on, it would be the fire department's recommendations that they could have the, you know, it's not saying we're not allowing anything over and above what the fire department is saying.
It's the maintenance.
Sure. The other comment that I would make on, if we start seeing these Lamaras, a word to the Y is that it could require a larger water tap, depending on how many nozzles you have, you know, those things have to be sized out, so it could be upfront cost, that's all.
Yeah.
Yep.
Understood. Yeah, I guess kind of weighing the cost back and forth, and I can appreciate where the county's coming from on providing a hydrant there. It's just, it is just a single residence back there. There's not multiple homes, and I am the end user, and so... Or the planning and zoning, sorry, county, but, you know, that's kind of the route I wanted to take, so...
Does that apply to auxiliary buildings too, once you've made the decision? Fire suppressant, if you build out a garage or storage shed, you have to put that system in those too?
From my understanding, I believe so, yeah.
Because if you opt out of the hydrant, then you've got to protect all your buildings.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that is stated in the fire suppression statement on the plat that all future buildings on the lot will have a fire suppression system.
Okay, other questions?
Nathan Helmick, and I guess I'll be honest with you, really, I didn't want to be pushed into a, no, I shouldn't say pushed, but I didn't want to be, I really didn't want to have to make a decision on one or the other at this time. My thought was that just get deeded, and then when the time came, I could do the more research to... Because you're right, I mean, it is going to present issues with now heating a building down the road and that sort of thing, and to provide fire suppression in each other building if I were to, you know, add anything to it. But I guess it just kind of wound up going this direction, so...
I don't think we ought to be second guessing the fire department, and they said you could have either one. I'm fine with it.
Is there, I guess, not to interrupt you, but maybe clarify this. So can it be left to choose one or the other, or does one have to be chosen now?
I mean, since the option was given by the fire department, we may be able to... Because if we put plat language on that and have that recorded, then whatever's on there is it. Because whenever we do a permit review, we pull up the plat to see what the requirements are for the subdivision. We could put the fire department's exact language of, instead of a fire suppression will be required for lot, we could put that option of one or the other onto the plat as a note, and then it would allow the applicant the ability to choose at that time of construction.
Yeah, I would be appreciative if I could do that. I just, it would allow some more time. I'm really leaning towards that fire suppression system, but, you know, I mean, I don't even down the road. If I decide, okay, hey, I would like the ability, if I do fire suppression on the house, if I decide to put a garage, you know, maybe put a fire hydrant at that time, I don't know. I'd just be held to one or the other, so...
So we may be able to do that plat language of prior to a permit being issued, one or the other has to be decided upon. So it'd either be a hydrant installed before a permit could be released, or suppression must be included in the building permit plan. So like, we could have a statement that gives an option.
And you'd be okay with a language on the plat with that option?
Yeah, I would prefer that, actually, yeah, that's...
Yeah, absolutely.
And the sanitation district has requested the opportunity to coordinate during design permitting construction within Reed Lane right-of-way to ensure that any improvements are appropriately accommodate the sanitation district. The, you know, given that, I have a little bit of heartburn with the, with the, let's see. Allow FSD to coordinate with FC DOT. There probably needs to be one, somebody in charge. You know, if you're trying to coordinate with, sometimes you can get conflicting and so on. The, I would rather see, you know, whichever agency is appropriate there to... The, does the Department of Transportation not consider sanitation department input when they're improving streets?
They do. They would be aware that that was a requirement at that time. So coordination is, would be pretty important on this one. So I see what you're saying on that. If the applicant was to let us know when the upgrades were going to be installed, that would be the time where the two other agencies would have to be lumped in so they could all get a cohesive game plan. So...
So sanitation department also is requiring the easement on the plat.
Yep.
Yeah, we have that indicated on the plat. It's 30 feet from the lot line along the east and south lot lines.
So I think the fact that they have a utility easement kind of bumps up the importance, to your point. You know, that proper coordination should be had. Maybe the language is appropriate, since it is a utility easement, not just a service line or something to that. I mean, it's one of their mains that are going through that, correct?
I'm sorry, can you...
It's one of their mains that are going through that lot. That's why they need the easement. Is that correct?
It doesn't necessarily go through the lot. It's basically, it's along the outside of the lot line. And so they just wanted to have access from both sides of the, from the line, of the line. So the north side access would be on lots one and two.
So do you know what they're talking about when they want coordination? What, over and above they would want?
As Reed Lane approaches the lot, there is a manhole just before that gate. And so I would imagine that as they make improvements to Reed Lane to approach the lot, that they would just want to make sure that manhole's not covered or that it has whatever reinforcement needed so that way there's no damage to that manhole. And I think we have a call out on the plat, if you zoom in towards Reed Lane where it meets the, where it meets the lot.
With the driveway access permit number?
I think it's 24003, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my issue with it is, like, well, if it's a condition to allow sanitation department to coordinate with FC DOT, who's overseeing that? What's the, you know, who's making sure that happens, and what's the byproduct if it doesn't? And who determines, are they allowed coordination but not total say-so? That's, it's the process that I have an issue with.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
And normally, if a permit, access permit wasn't already applied for, that would obviously trigger the FC DOT to be involved, which would then trigger this whole thing to be cohesive.
Yep.
Since we already have an access permit for that, you do pose a very interesting question.
Yeah, fair enough. There's no trigger, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's no trigger that would do it.
So I'm not opposed to the language. I just don't know how it would be carried out.
Okay.
And I guess with the manhole being there, I mean, they're going to have their say-so. It's not going to be forgotten about.
Yep, it certainly would not. And I have not coordinated with FC DOT to see if they want to come out and inspect after it's brought up to county road standards to see that it has or that the county spec material is being used, so...
I'll be curious if it's going to be built up to county standards. Surely they have some kind of standards for manholes and dirt roads, right?
I would imagine so. I'm not 100% familiar with the standards.
A standard that's already implied.
It may be established. I am not aware.
Yeah, me neither.
This is something I could clearly research before this.
No, it's a funky one, right?
A whole lot of new stuff.
Yeah.
So what kind of improvements are proposed for Reed Lane?
The improvements to Reed Lane, it's just asking for...
I just see a driveway permit.
Yeah, they have driveway permit, and if you scroll to the bottom of that permit, FC DOT actually handwrote in in that blue ink of spec material to county road standards. Because before, it was very generic about the material that was wanted. So I asked FC DOT Director Witt to take a look at that, and they did not write a new letter spelling it all out. They just handwrote in on the access permit what they would like to see. So that's what we have for submission from them, so...
But again, you guys are okay with that, so you would withdraw your waiver for that, your request for a waiver for that?
Yeah, and we, and the waiver, yeah, that should have been nullified once we got that access permit with that extra requirement to meet county specs. And as I mentioned before, those county specs, as far as I'm aware, was basically just Class 6 road base, which is what's existing there that just kind of fizzles out into the, that area between the lot and Reed Lane. So we're going to uphold that to the lot line.
When the improvements to Reed Lane are contemplated to begin, is there any planning department actions needed to allow that to begin?
No, no, they're not. So Travis's question of what is the trigger and how does this not get lost is a valid one. I'm trying to think, because when are, when is the applicant, if, say, this all goes through, BOCC says approval, when are you guys looking to either certify the base that's there so it is the correct material or to install that? Like, what is your guys' timeline on that? I know you're not expecting development right away, but do you get...
Yeah, I guess that's up in the air. Essentially, like, it's just, to me, it's the extension of my driveway through that easement to Reed Lane there. So I wasn't planning on extending that driveway with that class six material to Reed Lane until I built, but if there was a need to do it beforehand, I'm open to that too, if that could happen.
I'm wondering if this isn't on your timeline for right away, if we could make that a plat note. Do another note on the plat that this must be done prior to a permit being issued, and then that would alleviate timelines, coordination, everything else. It would be triggered at the time of a permit request.
Yeah, that works good for me too.
Well, or even cleaner, just maybe get with sanitation department and see what their requirements are for this and have that done before the BOCC, right?
It would certainly prepare this?
What your, that the coordination is already done and what their requirements are. You know, be a little more, a little easier, I think. Don't have to have an additional plat note. It's already done before BOCC hears it.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you've taken a look at it and you believe the material's already in place, if there's some way you could work with FC DOT and the sand district before the BOCC meeting, then this goes away. Or if somehow that's not a thing, then worst-case scenario, we might be able to put a note on the plat. I guess it's your guys' option, kind of?
I'm kind of confused. I guess my assumption was that we needed to add class six road base as opposed to confirm that that's what is there currently.
And it would be a conversation with Mike Witt. So FC DOT would be the ones that could tell you to either probably certify what's there or to install.
Okay.
If it comes down to install and it's a dollar and cents thing, then maybe that could be a plat note at that time.
Okay.
Or time to do it. But coordination with FC DOT, and I can certainly send an email and get that conversation started if you guys like.
Yeah, I would say, and the sand district at the same time. If you're going to have a meeting out there, just have both agencies out there, get it all planned in place and be done with it.
And for...
Not that you have to do it at that time, but at least you know what the coordination is.
Yeah.
And for our action today, where does that leave us then?
Well, I would say to confirm it, since the applicant said that they're willing to do it, if, at a minimum, we say that it would be a plat note, and then if they're able to resolve it prior to, then that could just be removed prior to BOCC.
Yee-haw. And then my last comment is I think we can take out contingency to A. That's really something just for the water department, and I could clarify that in my future letters, you know, for these things. But really, it's a contingency for them to get a water tap. It really shouldn't be on the plat or anything like that. Because there could be places out in the county that would just get a well, so there wouldn't need a water service contract. So we can handle that, and the water department doesn't need to be any kind of contingency through the planning and zoning. So I'll be more clear on that in my letters in the future.
Okay, so just so, I'll hopefully clarify this, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to, for planning and zoning department approval, number one, approval of waiver request, the topo and soils. For number two contingencies, we will make BA and allow FSD to place a lock on the gate if wants to remain. And then we will keep the conditions as listed and add a plat note about both fire suppression and the FC DOT.
I would remove A and just make the plat note.
Okay. Okay.
And also for the, regarding FSD and the gate, that gate is planned to be removed, so there's no need for a lock to be coordinated with FSD on that gate.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the contingency should probably remain. If a gate goes in, they get a lock.
Or if the gate remains, the gate is there.
All done.
Was that a motion? Any further questions or comments from the commissioners? The, and you have the language there?
For the hydrant aspect or...
For the motion.
Yes, I would have the language for the motion. Yeah, approval number one, number two as modified with the removal of the water service contract. Number three, the conditions with the addition of the fire suppression and hydrant. And the plat note about Reed Lane's improvements prior to construction.
And considering that language, I'll make the motion that we accept that language as a board. I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Rudeley, you want to get us started?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, we have an update scheduled. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. All right, so I wanted to give you guys some feedback. I had talked to John about this, and he thought this could be helpful. The CDP 24-001, the Penrose RV and boat storage, that was a kind of funky one. The first time anyone could remember that a Boza decision was overturned and a redesign was requested, where an application was actually tabled and allowed the applicant to redesign. What is it? The applicant wind up reducing to two prefabricated storage buildings for a total of 15,183, 83 square feet, which reduced their overall build size by 2,850 square feet. With that new design, the applicant was able to meet all setbacks and not need the variance request. As requesting a different... to meet all setbacks and not need the variance request. As requesting a different board's approval to be overturned is not normally standard. I know it was this board's, it was kind of unknown to this board if you guys had the authority to make a recommendation to go along with that. And if I remember correctly, the talking point was, well, since this is kind of unknown to us, we'll get it up to the BOCC and take their guidance moving forward. It was felt that the, you guys were able to make a recommendation of whether or not to stick with that variance request or to go against it. And obviously, if, if this board knew where, and you guys had actually decided to not go with that Boza approval, then that might have helped your guys' approval, because this went with a unanimous approval up to the BOCC, and then the pause button was hit, and they were allowed to table it to redesign because the commissioners were not supporting it and agreed that the Boza variance was, should not have been allowed. So, yeah, if we ever have something along those lines, again, you guys do have the right to make a recommendation on it. And then, and then we can go from there. So, certainly not standard.
Good to know.
So the, so the process, the process was Boza made a recommendation, and the, the, our concern was that it was, that, wait a minute, I'm going to back up, so.
Yes. So Boza allowed a variance, and Boza has a very, very strict guidelines of when they could do a variance, and it has to meet all four of their guidelines.
Right.
And it did not.
Right. And that they granted it anyway.
But they had granted the approval, and they had granted a variance, even though it did not meet that four standard threshold.
Correct.
So then when it was brought to this board, my recommendation was to overturn that variance.
Right.
Which I don't know has ever been done before.
Right.
So it was, it was very new. So I made the recommendation, and this board kind of didn't know where your authority lied, if you guys had the ability to go against the, a different board's variance.
And, and I think the bottom line is there, is it's not really an overturning of the Boza variance, because it would be our recommendation that it, that it be redesigned, if we went, if we chose that as our outcome of the, of the proceedings. And so, so it wasn't, it's not that Boza speaks and we follow, but Boza speaks, we listen, we consider, and then we come to our own conclusions to recommend, make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
And, and if you guys had recommended denial based on not agreeing with the Boza variance, whether or not the applicant would have taken that feedback and taken that time to redesign, or if they would have pushed ahead to see what Boza, which way, or which way the BOCC was going to go, whether or not it would have saved them time or not, it may have been helpful feedback, I'm not sure. But ultimately, when they got up to the county commissioners, there was a lot of questions being asked, and the applicant was asked if they would like time to redesign, and that, it was tabled in a full redesign, and they only lost less than 3,000 square feet.
So did Boza ever acknowledge that it did not meet all four criteria, yes or no?
Boza was informed that their variance was overturned.
For the fact that it did not meet the four criteria?
I was not the one that presented it. They, they were told, yes.
Excuse me? Well, I understand that, I'm just asking whether or not they ultimately acknowledged, Boza, that they did not meet the four criteria, and the Board of County Commissioners basically said, no.
It was very clear to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
As I remember, there was a lot wrong with that. It wasn't just.
Yeah, there was a lot wrong with that.
Yes.
It wasn't one or two points, I mean, that whole thing was a wreck.
It, it was a complicated application, and we normally try to offer some feedback, and our feedback wasn't, applicant wasn't really responsive to staff's feedback, they wanted to see where it was going to go. So it, it did have some difficulties. But they're, I think they're applying for their building permits now and getting ready to break ground. So it's exciting for them.
Did they have to come back before us with the new plan?
They did not. It, their, their approved plan turned out to be less impactful, and, you know, the reduce of 3,000 square feet of size, it wasn't a very significant change, so it only went back in front of the county commissioners.
So this is what the county commissioners approved, Richard, I'll show you what it was.
So they, they took, it was originally going to be, what, three, three sets of buildings, or three buildings?
Yes.
And they reduced it down to the two. But, yeah, they had lost that 2850 square foot.
It was kind of an office, wasn't it?
No, so the office part of it had gone away, this is going to be completely unmanned.
The part that was lost was the office?
Oh, no, it was going to continue, it was storage units. So they kind of had a, storage units to where the back of the building was to the roadway.
Uh-huh.
And then the back of the building was to the ditch, and then all of the units would open up to the center, was their original design.
Right, so they got rid of that.
Yes.
Wasn't there something about the water too, they didn't, they said they didn't need water? Yeah, they didn't need water.
Yeah, they had a water main right, right in front. There was something with that water main that was funky, you're right.
Well, they said, we don't need water, we don't need.
Yeah, there was something there. And they had a wash bay too, and it's like, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember that?
And, and they agreed to chemical toilets, so there will be sanitation on site, since the area doesn't really have any sanitation available anywhere. County's felt it was fair not to go full OWTS or vault versus, so we, we allowed the chemical toilets. But yeah, so it, the design changed a little bit.
And so the bottom line for us is that, is that we can consider, you know, conditions and requirements, and come to our own conclusions, no matter what another board might say.
Yes, sir.
Except the county commissioners.
They kind of got the final say.
They got the final say. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.